All right, the time is 6:00 PM. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, please. May we have a roll call?
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins is absent. Uh, councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Cordis.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
We have a court.
Thank you very much. Let's begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll go ahead and open up our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I do have one with me in front, and that is Ms. Chris Reed.
Good evening, all.
Thanks.
I attended the Chamber Awards banquet Friday night, and I just wanted to say it was a beautiful affair. I mean, personally, it was a surprise for me to be nominated as the kind of de facto town historian, and that means a lot to me. But what means even more is what a wonderful event it was to see the town working together in such a marvelous way. I mean, it just really gave me hope for the future, and I feel like the town is really moving forward in a really positive sense. So I want to thank you personally from the bottom of my heart for that recognition, and thank you all for whatever parts you had in getting that for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Go ahead and close call to the public. Our first presentation this evening, segueing right in, is the Chamber of Commerce. This is our 2019 annual report from the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce and Mr. Roger Beatty.
Good evening, Mayor Walter, Vice Mayor Anderson, and councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm here to talk about McFarland State Park and how we did last year. So, uh, if you look at all the numbers, it was, it was kind of flat. Everybody, um, the visitations stayed, dropped just a little bit by a couple hundred, donations went down, and gift shop went down, all by very, very small amounts. The first quarter of visitations in 2018, it looked like we had a pretty good year, a pretty good quarter. Um, it went down quite a bit in 2019, but we started making up numbers in 19, and ended up, as you can see, about 150 short. Uh, donations, same thing. Uh, had, had a good first quarter, and then we started catching up a little in the second, third, and fourth quarter as we gained a little attraction and started having a little bit more events. Uh, the gift shop followed suit with the same way. I am enthusiastic about the future of McFarland. In the last couple of years, the, the displays have not been changed, so these are pretty much brand-new visitors, first-time visitors, um, that are not coming to see a new one. It's the first time they've ever been there. So as we continue to rotate the displays, which we're planning to do, we've been working with the state parks on getting not only new displays but new items, and so, I don't know how many have been there recently, but, so it's a little bit more full, so it's actually more like a museum and not like an empty courthouse. So we expect that to pick up, um, pick up visitations quite a bit and a little bit more enthusiasm. But going back to 2019, we held a bunch of, we held a number of events, um, a lot of talks by people like Quay Huckabee, who's a local, local legend, but also Arizona Humanities did five or six, um, talks in, in McFarland, along with, we participated in the 75th anniversary of the GI Bill, which brought a lot of attention to the park, McFarland, and the town of Florence. We continue to advertise, I think everybody has seen, our push towards the last end of 2019 and into 2020, social media, using that a lot more, uh, using, accessing our connections to various town websites, or nearby towns, excuse me, to draw people here, so, not trying to push into 2020 yet, but towards the end of 19 and 2020, we've seen a huge uptake, uptick in our, in our visitations for our, for our talks, so we only look for even better things in 2020. Just answering some of the things from the contract that we have, we were open the proper hours during winter, summer, and fall, staffed either one or two people at all times. We did keep a, a newsstand or a information stand right outside for those times that we are closed. Uh, we are advertising on the Chamber website, the Facebook page, and other various flyers and newsletters around Penal County of the events and advertising the town. Are there any questions?
Question, go ahead.
Are you open on the 3rd Friday?
We are, we have not been open on the 3rd Friday because we've been assisting, um, and we're not taking away from the businesses. We've been supporting it, but not taking away. And there is talk in the future, once, now that I just clicked on the last slide, um, some of the events that we're doing in participation of 3rd Friday, we will start opening, um, in, uh, March will be the first time we're open.
Thank you.
Will you share a little bit, just because you have this picture up here, and we had chatted about it, about the art behind bars?
Yeah, I forgot about my last slide, I apologize. So, talking, moving into 2020, uh, we're looking for a pretty big year at McFarland and the State Park. As I mentioned already, I've been working with the State Park to get down, get their people down here to open up the archives, and I've been also working with the McFarland family and the Mark McFarland Foundation to get some of the things that haven't been displayed before. They have a lot of things that they kind of hold dear, and I've been doing my best to be nice to them, to see if they'll bring it down to Florence and kind of share those things, so we'll have an added push for that. But also, we're going to start using the courtroom as a exhibit, uh, for things like the art behind bars, which is something where we partnered with the town and purchased about $4,000 worth of art supplies, canvases and other mediums for the art, for inmates to produce art. They're going to bring it back to us, and we're going to display it at various places around town, including the Historical Society, uh, the Library and Community Center, the place in, um, a place in Anthem, a place in Park City, or Park View?
Parkside.
Parkside, thank you, and Florence Garden. So it'll be a town-wide art installation, if you will, and it'll all be inmate-produced art. It'll be introduced on 3rd Friday, as you mentioned. It'll go for two weeks, and then on the 4th and 5th of April, which is our Arts and Culture Festival, we'll have a big booth celebrating the town of Florence and all this inmate art, and we will be selling it, and the pros, part of the proceeds will be going to FUSD, their art department, part of the proceeds will be going to the State Park, and another portion to a charity that, that helps us with the supplies.
I think that's the same week of Music Festival.
That's in March. March 15th is the, is the Music Festival. We're two or three weeks after.
Okay, thank you.
And then, one thing that I'm working with a certain person, I don't know if I'm allowed to mention his name right now, but, um, yeah, for Junior Parada, we're also planning on doing a Cowboy Poetry Reading, Storytelling, and Music Festival, kind of like they do in some of the area of western towns, and trying to bring all these people like Marshall Trimble and such to Florence to do a town-wide event where people will kind of go to various stores and venues to see cowboys either singing, writing, or reciting poetry or telling stories, and we hope that will bring a lot, a lot of people to the town also.
Are there any other questions?
I don't have a question. I was gonna say, that all sounds fantastic. I'm very impressed, and, um, that's exactly what I was hoping for, and it's so exciting to see that those things are coming to fruition, so thank you.
Thank you.
Would you also share with council, because our partnership with the Chamber has been amazing, and since our contract renewal and since you coming aboard personally, it really has made a cohesive unit and tied together the different parts of the town between our council, the business community, visitors, and residents. We have a lot of things that are coming up that the Chamber's playing an integral role in at this time. Would you also share some of those upcoming events?
Sure. Let's see, starting out, uh, we are participating, we are helping out with the, the home tour. Uh, we're opening up McFarland for the home tour, uh, like, once again, and providing a lot of the staff to, or not a lot, a small portion of the staff with the home tour. The following week, we are doing our annual car show, which, right now, we're looking at more than 300 cars. We're way above where we were last year at this point, and we'll be, uh, having our car show, which, once again, hopes to bring 3,000 to 4,000 people to our town. We are partnering with, uh, the Florence Music Festival, helping them with their, um, with a big portion of it, but mostly their vendors and handling that aspect of it, and, um, Country Thunder, which I guess we'll find out if we'll be a part of that a little bit later in the show this evening. Then in April, we're doing the Arts and Culture Festival. At some point during March, uh, maybe even, um, April or May, we hope to be doing some candidate forums for those that are running for office for the council and the mayor's, um, seat, we'll be, we'll be arranging that. I've been talking to people about venues for that this week. Am I missing anything that you wanted me to talk about? I'm like, in November.
You're right on the path.
We're also doing some Lunch and Learn with ASU, where we'll be opening up to the public and local businesses, um, for some things that hopefully will help drive business or customers to their place, maybe helping with social media, which, you know, I know council, councilmember Cordis has done in the past, but working with ASU to some, bring, bring some talent down, down to Penal County and help, help our small businesses. And then the fall schedule is still to be determined, other than the Cowboy Festival, which we're working on right now.
It's okay, don't rush past summer, just enjoy the spring.
Okay, we're, 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 we're starting, and then the, uh, 2021 Community Awards have already been put in the calendar.
Excellent, and that was an amazing event that you guys had planned.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, next time it'll be bigger. We, we could have sold another, I was just telling Jennifer, could have sold another 40 tickets if we wanted to.
Absolutely.
We sold out, though. So.
All right.
Anything else?
That is all.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. Our next presentation of the evening is the 2020 Legislative Agenda Presentation by Mr. Ben Bitter.
All right. Thanks, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We like to do these legislative agenda updates every year, um, after the governor's budget comes out, so we start a couple weeks into the session, and I think that was especially fruitful this year, as, uh, the governor's budget kind of surprised all of us, and so, we certainly had a time to, to review that and review some of the bills that have been proposed in the first few weeks of the session. I want to kind of give you guys an idea of, of our goals and as well, our agenda for moving forward and how we will combat some of the negative bills and then try to move forward some of the positive bills. So, uh, we'll try to scoot, scoot through this pretty quickly, as, as you all have seen a copy of this, but, uh, very similar makeup to last year. Um, in the, in the legislature, obviously, there hasn't been an election, so the parties are split at the same, but in terms of the dates, the session began on January 13th, and it's supposed to be about 100 days. Um, last year, it, it scooted into June. This year, we think it'll be a little bit shorter. This is a campaign year, and so they want to get back out on the streets and start campaigning, and so we'll likely see a compressed, um, schedule this year closer to that 100-day mark. To that end, the defining point of any legislative session is when the budget gets passed, and with the governor having released his budget, also the Senate and the House have each released their budgets, and they're fairly closely aligned, so we do think that there will be some, some movement on that a little earlier than normal. Again, Senate President Karen Fan and Speaker of the House Rusty Ballers. Just as has been for many years, we have Senator Frank Pratt out of Casa Grande, Representative TJ Shoup, who is the Speaker Pro Tem again, uh, out of Coolidge, and then Representative David Cook out of Globe, that's the district that serves the town of Florence. In terms of the proposal for the legislative agenda, we have about 10 points here. The first is, is always going to be our number one, I think, and that is protecting our state shared revenues. That becomes particularly poignant as we get to point number four, and as part of the governor's budget, as you all are aware, um, he had announced the closure of the Florence Complex, the Arizona State Prison Complex at Florence, and so, how we can minimize those impacts in, in dealing with the closure of that complex and how it affects our state shared revenues is certainly going to be our main focus. We've had, as, as Brent has mentioned at previous council meetings, already met with the Department of Corrections and the director there. We continue to work with the governor's office, with our legislators, and with many others, to get the word out about how big of a hit this will be for the town of Florence. Uh, while it's only a $1.5 million direct hit, and that is spread out amongst our HERF funds and various other funds, um, it's certainly a hit that was not anticipated, and we want to try to minimize that as much as we can. And so, um, as, as I guess that relates to points one and four on, on the sheet before you. Uh, the second is oppose the cost shifting onto cities and towns. Fortunately, um, we've seen about 10% increase in revenues at the state level this year, so we don't anticipate any cost shifts. However, they are discussing repealing the vehicle license fee and moving it back six months, so it repeals six months sooner, and in that case, that, that fee was meant to cover the cost of the DPS operations, and so if there again is not funding, a permanent funding mechanism for DPS operations, there could again be a shift onto HERF funds where, where we could see a, a loss of HERF funds, and so that's something that we'll be watching and making sure that, uh, those HERF dollars are staying as, as whole as possible. And then finally, on, on this page, number three is preserve local control. Once we get into the bills section, you'll see a lot of the, the bills that we don't like, use the word prohibit, and the bills that we do like are allow cities to do A, B, or C, and so wherever there are prohibitions and/or, as is the, uh, the common term in the country, preemptions, uh, we try to fight against those. So some of those include incorporation, there are a couple bills about incorporation, land use planning in general or business licensing, those are all types of, of bills that we could see pop up here. Um, just by way of, of the calendar, I believe today is the last day that senators can introduce bills, and next Monday is the last day that representatives can introduce bills. So although we've seen a 35% increase in bills this year over last year, uh, hopefully that number can stop here shortly, and, uh, we won't have to read through any more of those. Remaining points on the proposed agenda, seek budget allocations for the Heritage Fund is number five. There is a bill, which we'll get to a little bit later, that has already passed out of committee favorably with a unanimous vote, um, to restore some funding for Heritage Fund, $10 million, and so we're, we're certainly signed in in support of that, and we'll continue to support that effort. That goes to, to fund, uh, historical projects or parks and recreation projects across the state. Uh, number six, we'd love to see some economic development tools added to the agenda. The tax increment financing, Arizona's the only state without tax increment financing. One of the most important ones that's listed here is the vacant building registry. Town of Florence and, and Larry Harmer's done a great job working with the league and getting some language for this. House Bill 2705 is actually creating a registry of any vacant properties. The reason I put this under economic development is because if you have a vacant property and it collapses, then it's going to affect the value of all neighboring properties, the, the regional properties, and it makes it very difficult for economic development. So that's certainly a tool that, that we want to, uh, I guess, promote and, and try to get into statute as well. Enhance tourism, always looking for opportunities where the Department of Tourism or the Office of Tourism can get extra funding. And then, um, finally, public services. Obviously, this is a very important time of year for how it relates to groundwater and, and what the discussion will be in follow-up to the drought contingency plan that was passed last year, what's going to happen in the active management areas, and how that affects the town. So we're certainly monitoring that as best we can. So in order to, uh, follow this agenda, we will advocate at the legislature and at all levels, we'll coordinate with the League of Cities and Towns, we'll work with our representatives from the federal level all the way down to the, uh, regional level. Certainly seek your, your direction and assistance is, is necessary in, in those efforts, and so, just as, as an idea, this morning, we had the CAG Legislative Day, uh, we had three senators or representatives there, that Senator Pratt, Senator Steele out of Tucson, and then Representative Shoup. And then we continuously review bills and on the request to speak system, which, again, you all have access to as well, uh, we register our position formally as the town of Florence in support or opposed to the various bills that pop up. With that, just give a quick overview of the budget. Again, this is the largest budget in Arizona's history, $12.3 billion, uh, according to the governor's proposal. Uh, there's $1 billion of new spending in there compared to last year. There's a small deposit to the rainy day fund. The idea is becoming that the, the governor's office would like to see 10% of the operating budget into the reserves or into the rainy day fund, and because there's only about $1 billion in there, he wants to put a little bit more, so it's at that 10% level. Again, 608 million for, uh, K-12 education. HERF funding is full and is not hurt within the budget. Uh, there's $10 million of additional funding for rural broadband grants. The Department of Revenue Assessment unfortunately continues in there, and we think that'll probably remain in the budget, uh, for as long as Governor Ducey is in office. That's $20.8 million that cities pay to fund Department of Revenue operations, certainly not something that we're in favor of. We don't think that cities should be paying for the operations of a state agency, but there we go, we paid $69,000, uh, for that, or we'll pay this year, $69,000. Another good thing that is in the budget, though, is a 10% increase for Department of Corrections employees, so again, similar to last year, we, um, you all, as, as council, passed a resolution supporting the 10% increase for Department of Corrections employees, and that was again put in the budget this year. So, great, great opportunity for our region to see additional dollars. Um, just by way of interest, there's money in there to start looking at soil and drainage studies for the Superstition Vista's area, that's between the town of Florence and US-60, so there could be some movement there. And then $28 million to expand particularly the Gila River Bridge along I-10, so those are the key points of the governor's budget. Any questions before I hit into some of the bills? Okay. A few, first, a good bill is House Bill 2053. This actually talks about executive sessions, and it would allow an additional component of, of when you can go into executive session, and that would be to talk about building safety or cybersecurity, if you're talking about actual security elements that may not be appropriate for public discussion. This was a league resolution, Representative Espinoza sponsoring that, and I, I have not heard any negative things about this. It seems to make sense to everyone that if we're going to talk about our security, that that's probably something that should be done behind closed doors. Um, a negative bill, if you've followed the City of Apache Junction's discussion on, on trash service, um, this is very similar and, and something done across all of our communities, but there is eventually an element where you can be charged criminally if you don't follow city code or town code in our case, and Representative Townsend is, is looking for specifically to prohibit charging and a resident criminally who chooses not to sign up for trash service. So this would be after multiple attempts at, uh, fines and regulations and code enforcement. Eventually, there is a criminal element where you can be charged with a misdemeanor if you do not have service, so Representative Townsend is proposing that, and something that we would oppose. An interesting bill, not that we are, are for or against it per se, but this is the cancer presumption. There's been a lot of discussion about firefighter health in particular, and we certainly, as, as the town, want to support firefighter health. This bill and/or the companion bill of 1160 and 1161, um, would make it so all forms of cancer are not just presumed, but they are, are inherently, uh, derived from the fire service. So anyone that would have served at least five years within the fire service and under 1161, also the, the peace officers, so police officers as well would be included in that, if they are ever to receive a cancer diagnosis before they hit the 65-year age where they can go on, uh, federal Medicare, they would be under, covered under the towns' workmen's compensation insurance, and so, obviously, this would be a, a large financial hit to the, to the town and/or cities across the state, and so, really, the only concern we have with this is, is how we go about funding this, what that look like, looks like in the long run, um, what happens if, for example, you have a firefighter retire at age 50, goes and works at Intel as a new job, and he's working at Intel for five or 10 years and develops cancer, then workman's comp is paying for, the town's workman's comp is paying for his cancer treatment as well as his replacing his wages, his lost wages from Intel. There are some of those nuances that get a little complicated, and so what we're trying to do, or the League of Cities is trying to do, is, is just work out and iron out those complications to make sure that the bill can work for everyone. And then certainly, because the, the state has a very good rainy day fund established, and they have great revenues coming in this year, hopefully finding a way to fund this. There is a bill within the Senate that pays about $20 million to cover some of these charges, so, um, there is some movement there as well. And then on this page, the last one, is House Bill 2313. I don't know why it says partisan offices for local officials, I just forgot to change that, I guess, but, uh, this is talking about fire codes, uh, for restaurants in particular that hold more than 300, um, more than 300 people. Cities would be prohibited from adopting codes that require sprinklers in those locations, so, um, this is something by the Arizona Restaurant Association, that they want to prohibit towns and cities from enforcing a fire code on, uh, facilities that have more than 300 people, something certainly that, that we would fight for no other reason than we're trying in the bill previous to protect our firefighters from any sort of cancer exposure. If we don't have sprinkler in these large facilities, then that's just another instance where they could get cancer, and so, uh, certainly want to ensure that there is a local ability to have those sprinkler systems, should that be the local authorities' option to, to choose that within the fire codes. Any questions on those four, yeah, any of those four bills? And then finally, House Bill 2705 is, is the bill I mentioned earlier, run by Representative Shoup. A good bill, we're very supportive of that, and I anticipate that the town will be speaking in testimony on that one here in the, the coming weeks as it is assigned to committee. Again, I mentioned House Bill 2551, that's the appropriation for state parks and heritage funds, so if you want to track that one, that's a good one. Um, House Bill 2615, again, the title's not changed, I really dropped the ball, but it does prohibit cities from requiring vacant properties to maintain utilities, so as you compare 2615 to 2705, uh, 2615 prohibits the very thing that we're trying to do in 2705, so, um, that one's a, a little scarier. Um, and then finally, Senate Bill 1280, this is kind of technical, but, um, any payments that we would make to our unfunded liability with PSPRS would not be considered as part of our permanent base adjustment, and so it would help us out a little bit if we're getting close to that, that cap on our permanent base adjustment or our expenditure limitation, um, we could kind of subtract those payments out if we were to make those payments, so. I believe that's it. With that, I'll take any questions or any further direction from the council.
No, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. Our next item is the Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the Consent Agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is authorization to purchase one 2020 Chevy Crew Cab from Courtesy Chevrolet for the Water Division of Public Works in an amount not to exceed for the Water Division of Public Works in an amount not to exceed $37,941.41. Item B, authorization to suspend the Town of Florence Special Event Vendor Permit Rules for the Road to Country Thunder event to allow the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to coordinate vendors and collect vendor fees as a fundraiser during the Road to Country Thunder event on April 11, 2020. Item C is authorization to enter into an intergovernmental agreement number 2019-03, allowing the Florence Police Department to participate in the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission grant number DC-20010, and accept the reimbursement of the employee overtime costs and related expenses. Approval D. D, approval of a settlement agreement and generally release in the matters of the Association of Florence Firefighters, International Association of Florence Firefighters, Local 4512 versus the Town of Florence. Item E, approval of accepting the Register of Demands ending December 31, 2019 in the Personally, I'm going to ask for item D to be removed because I am not going to vote on it because I have not participated in anything. Is there anybody else who would like any item removed at this time?
I want item D removed also.
I'd like to have item C removed only for clarification.
D and C. All right. With that, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item C and D.
I motion that we approve the consent agenda with the removal of item C and D.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item number C, because it comes first, Councilmember Wall.
I was just going to ask Chief Walls to clarify the vote requested on this item.
Thank you, Councilmember Wall. Mayor Walter, Vice Mayor Anderson, and council members, wanted to go ahead and point out an imperfection in my submission to you for your approval. And I wanted to provide some clarity into what I put on this particular form. We have participated with the Pinal County Narcotics Task Force for several years. That task force has allowed us to go ahead and eliminate or reduce criminal activity on our streets and keep drugs out of our school. We've had a member on that team for several years. This proposal was asking the council to continue to go ahead and approve that. So a yes vote on this particular agenda would mean that we would continue to go and have someone on that team. A no vote would mean that the council is not approving to go and have someone on this team. In my submission to you, I had those reversed.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Councilmember Wall, does that answer?
Thank you very much.
With that, we need a motion regarding item C.
I'll make a motion to approve item C on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I removed item D because I'm not participating, but also Vice Mayor Anderson.
Yes, I would like for the town attorney to explain the settlement because we've all been a part of this for several years, and I think we've done a so-a neat service to our firefighters, and I'd like him to expand on that.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, and members of the council, the issue was essentially a dispute over social security taxes that were withheld. There was a change in the opinion of the Social Security Administration in 2013. There were some refunds processed, but the local firefighters association felt that they had a position to pursue additional funds from the town and filed a lawsuit. The town was eventually victorious in that lawsuit and sought attorney's fees in the amount of $68,587. So, to resolve the case entirely between the parties, the association, bless you, the association has their representative signed off on this settlement agreement that's in your packet, that they would agree to not challenge the court's dismissal of the lawsuit if the town agrees not to pursue the attorney's fees in the $68,000. So, essentially, each side will bear its own costs and attorney's fees and resolve entirely the dispute.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item D.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that's done. No, I didn't want to say anything. That's why I was like, you take that part. All right. Item number eight is our unfinished business. This is ordinance number 68720. This is discussion approval and disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending 3045 entitled "Action Taken by Ordinance." The first reading was held on January 21, 2020. Mr. Clifford Matisse.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This is again, an item that is essentially kind of a cleanup item to remove the requirement of an ordinance coming before you when the town leases property. Some of the thinking behind it was to reduce the time period and just an attempt to reduce regulation to allow, for example, the town Silver King leases and move more expeditiously when those are renewed or extended to a new tenant. And the change to the ordinance or to the town code would be consistent with the practice. I don't think the town has always processed those leases with an ordinance. So, it's a good all-around cleanup provision to promote efficiency in our work.
All right. Are there any questions regarding this ordinance by council? With that, we need a motion, please.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 687-20.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item number nine, new business. A is a resolution number 173120. This is discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, supporting pending legislation regarding absentee landlords of vacant and abandoned buildings and authorizing execution by the mayor of supporting documents. Mr. Larry Harmer, really excited to have this in front of us this evening.
Thank you. Mayor, council, good evening. This has been an interesting journey on this particular project. About a year ago, I think it was probably March of last year, where we were upping our code enforcement issues, and of course, the abandoned buildings in downtown have been something of concern for some time, and how do we address them? And doing just research in general, I came across this concept in other states. This is legislatively approved in many other states. I came across a listing of approximately 1,000 communities nationwide that have taken this type of approach to their vacant and abandoned buildings. At the time we were working on this, there was no enabling legislation at the state level. At the same time, there was nothing prohibiting it, so we moved forward on this. And later, about mid-year, we had talked about this at HDAC and Planning Commission, I think we maybe even mentioned it once or twice at the council back then. But I participated in the 2019 Historic Preservation Conference in June up in Prescott last year, and my topic was legislative tools for planning and stabilizing of historic areas. And there are a number of them within our statutes, surprisingly, that most communities were not aware of. And just for general interest, floated this concept at the very last item on the presentation, and seemed like a lot of interest. I was asked to participate in the 2019 Rural Forum in Springerville in August and sat on a panel with the manager of Superior, who did his part as far as case history and the problems that they were having. I did a similar presentation on the tools that were available, and again, brought up this idea. The manager of Superior then took it to the Legislative Committee of the League, who has moved forward, and Mr. Bitter and myself have been participating directly with the League with the drafting of the wording of the legislation. I had already started an ordinance for us, and so we took a lot of that language, and then a couple of sample cities around the country to put together the draft legislation. It has been introduced by Representative Shope. There are a very, various number of supporting sponsors for this bill. We've been meeting with other legislators as recently as last week to answer questions. Some of the more conservative legislators are our targets right now because, you know, adding more layers of bureaucracy is not something they're keen on, but it looks like we're winning them over. Mr. Bitter and I have been asked to testify with the Legislative Rural Caucus on January, or February 18, down at the Capitol. That'll be approximately 20 representatives and/or senators from various parts of the state representing rural communities, so we're excited for that to move forward. So, generally speaking, what you have in front of you is a resolution drafted to support the legislation, and then in your packet is the current draft of the legislation itself, House Bill 2705. And then, the League has gone ahead and asked for support from various communities, and there's a sample of the information sheet. It's a two-pager at the end of our presentation in your packet tonight. I think it's very well-written. It's been distributed far and wide. I've been contacted as recently as this afternoon, for example, from the Town of Clarkdale. They want to sample our resolution and use it to move forward with theirs. I know that Superior's moving forward. I'm also, was asked to sit on the Legislative Committee for the Arizona chapter of the American Planning Association, and that chapter will be supporting this legislation as an element of land use planning vital to rural communities. And by the way, they'll be opposing the one that Mr. Bitter showed regarding the prohibition of us, as far as affecting of utilities on buildings. So, they're moving forward with this. That's kind of it. I'm just excited to see it make it this far. Hopefully, y'all like it. I think it's going to be a fundamental tool of success that all rural communities in Arizona will be able to draw from, I believe.
You know, this past August, when we attended the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Conference, this item was brought forward at our committee's resolution meeting, and we heard from other municipalities around that room of the hardships that they're experiencing, how it's negatively impacting their growth, impacting their ability for positive economic development. So I'm glad to see this happen, where all of our communities have been heard. Everybody has come together, and it's not just the little guy that's taking this on. It's taken form, and it's gone up to legislative action to give us the tools needed to do something about the issue.
And we're finding out that the larger cities in the state are also looking at this very favorably, with similar issues, Peoria in particular.
Well, I believe it passed unanimously in that Resolutions Committee that day.
So, if there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Well, I think you've addressed this before, but can you expand on the enforcement when we have abandoned buildings owned by corporations that you can't find an address for and stuff like that?
That's, Vice Mayor Anderson, council, that's where we hope this will help us. You know, for example, we know of a couple of properties downtown that are held in a trust, and the trust is being managed out of New York State. Now, it took some digging, but we did find the owner's name, or the trust manager's name, and were able to communicate with them, and they did some cleanup, and, you know, that part was nice. It was not a building itself, it was one of the vacant properties, the old theater. But what this legislation will do is allow cities and towns to develop a registry of contact people. And now, it'll have legal status for us to go after those trusts or whoever, and they will have to respond. Now, you know, rather than just to a local ordinance, we have legislative powers that have been assigned to this, and to assign a management individual within a certain proximity of the community. So if there's an issue or even, you know, a fire, you know, or something of that nature, there's somebody that we considered local that could be contacted and be responsible for whatever mitigation would be necessary for the property. And if it's, if it's just a building that's deteriorating, somebody that we can contact for the stabilization of the building. And we also has certain provisions that would allow this registry and the registrants, or allow us to require the registrants to do certain things to stabilize the integrity of the building. Not necessarily bring them up to full code where somebody can move in tomorrow and open a business, but to stabilize it so it doesn't deteriorate any further and therefore impact the adjacent properties.
Does this give us any kind of recourse if we don't get any response out of the owner?
Well, typical follow-up that you would have with code enforcement, you know, going to the level of investigation that it takes to get names. But what the, what the legislation does also in the creation of a local registry is allow us to charge a fee. And that fee has certain limitations on it, but it is progressive. So it costs a little bit more each year that your building sits there abandoned or vacant, to the point that the tax write-off that people are getting, or these trusts are getting on these vacant buildings, starts to deteriorate. Pretty soon, those numbers start to balance, and it's going to end up costing them as much as registered as they're getting back in their tax write-off. It's an incentive for them to stabilize these buildings. It's still going to take some work. It's going to take work to get the, get to the appropriate individual, the trust manager, whoever it is, but we will have the ability to require local contact information ultimately in this. And that's what our goal is, to have somebody within the vicinity who is responsible, has deemed, been deemed responsible by the trust or by the absentee property owner that can address day-to-day operations of the building, to address co-compliance issues and those types of things, somebody local that we can get to. It's going to take an effort to get those, but now we have the legislative backing to do it if this passes.
Thank you.
All right. With that, if there's no further questions, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 1731-20.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item B is ordinance of 688-20. This is a discussion approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Arizona, rescinding ordinance number 678-19 and adopting the local alternative expenditure limitation for the Town of Florence for the fiscal year 2019-2020 at $45,251,331.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council. We're bringing this to you tonight. As you're aware, in 2018, the town adopted a permanent base adjustment for alternative limitation, and we were in the middle, basically, of our home rule at that time. We were guided along with the League of Cities assisting us and with this constitutional provision that says after you adopt permanent base adjustment, it's effective the next budget year. Well, in mentioning this to our auditor this year, that we were going to be on permanent base adjustment, he asked me to please research it because he had another community that had done exactly the same thing, and the auditor general had made them a here-to-home rule. And so what we did is we contacted the auditor general, and yes, indeed, we are still under home rule until that expires, which is this year and next year. So... So when we adopted our expenditure limitation ordinance for this year, it was based on permanent base adjustment. Permanent base adjustment has a lot of exclusions to it. Home rule does not. So what we're asking tonight is council rescind that ordinance and then adopt the actual home rule limitation for us, as you have stated, Mayor, in the council action. This will not affect the budget at all, it's just the way that you calculate the expenditure limitation.
All right. Are there any questions, council members? With that, we need a motion, please.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 688-20.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item C, discussion approval disapproval to accept the sanitation rate study and adopt by motion a notice to, of intention to increase sanitation rates and fees as provided in the sanitation rate study and set a public hearing for March 16th, 2020. Ms. Jimenez.
Yes. Last year, we were asked by the deputy town manager to do an analysis on the sanitation fund. Whenever you see a sanitation fund start reducing their fund balance, and this had been occurring over several years, you need to take a quick look at what's going on. Well, what we did was a detailed analysis within the department. That means going down into the rates themselves, comparing to all the cost and, and the reason why this occurred. And I have done a detailed analysis for you. I hope that you have had time to read through it to show exactly what has happened with this sanitation fund. We have some capital items that are out there that we were planning for and in doing so with that, I have to subtract those out of the existing fund balance to show you what the actual fund balance is going to be based on our projections. And we had made several recommendations, but one of the most important ones was having a utility rate consultant come in and take a look at our analysis to validate it and also to offer suggestions. So we contracted with John Trheewitz, Sir Economy Solutions, and he's going to do the presentation tonight of the evaluation of the solid waste rate study.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Again, my name is John Trheewitz, Principal of Sir Economy Solutions. Both my partner David Hertzberg, who's here with me, we have over 40 years of experience in solid waste. Recently retired from the city of Phoenix as a Public Works Director, where we were responsible for solid waste as well. And so you're not alone in this situation that we're here to talk about today. Other cities are dealing with this as well. And so I'd like to go over the presentation today to talk a little bit about the rates, the process I went through and give you some scenarios that I came up with based on some fees. The rates that I feel would be appropriate to move forward so you don't have a zero balance here at the end. So again, a little bit about your program attributes. We talked about, you know, your program that your 1733 and your other rates cover both garbage recycling, bulk trash. You get free disposal once a month at the transfer station located here. You have yearly community cleanups and then you have rental equipment that you provide to your residents as well. These programs are similar to the other cities throughout the valley. They offer similar services, but there might be some, some stuff that aren't as similar as what you have. And I'll talk a little bit about that. And here's your rate and how you compare with some of the other cities throughout the valley. Good examples Chandler. The one thing I found out, they were almost similar in the fees, but their bulk trash program is every six weeks instead of every month. They don't offer community cleanups. There's some other things that they don't offer that you offer. And other cities do once a month bulk cleanup, some do once a quarter. It just depends, they're all over the board as it relates to the type of service. But you're very similar to what other cities are charging. If you look at the city of Phoenix, they're looking at, this year, they're looking to raise their rates by over $6 a month this year. So there, and a lot of that has to do with the recycling program and some other issues going on with the program. So another, some of the other cities are looking at raising rates as well as part of their programs. Talking about program attributes, as they talked about earlier, there's some capital that I added as part of my program when I looked at your, your structure. You have your $300,000, which is looking at the new eco station that you guys are underway at this time. The $100,000 is for new equipment that you're looking at for future, as well as $500,000, which would be for a future transfer station if the town moves forward with that as a partnership with other cities located in the area. And so as part of my rate review that I look at is working closely with staff. I, I try to understand the expenses that you had in the past, look at what your current expenses are happening this fiscal year, and then we look to project what possible next year's budget will be. And that's what I used as the starting point in projection, your, your fees, what your fees should be moving forward based on what the expenses will be in the next 10 years. I looked at a 10-year timeframe as you saw in your packet. And for that next year, this is basically what it looks like as part of your program, your expenses. And if you look at it, about 70% is your contract with RAD in the collection of your garbage recycling, your bulk trash program. The others, as you can see there, is your disposal, transfer of funding, which just helps cover the administrative cost of the program and then your capital program as for that particular year. And you can see them all broken down by that. So we're looking at about $1.2 million for next year and that's the starting point that I use moving the net forward with potential rates. And what I did is I looked at three different options and in what your fund balance, this shows what your fund balance looks like if you don't do anything today or anytime in the future, you keep the rates the same and your fund balance really goes about to zero by the year, by fiscal year 23. If you see the gray line that's vertical there, that designates the end of your contract with RAD. And so you would be prior to that, a year prior to that, you'd be going out looking forward, I F P, for that in the future.
John, if, if I could help from clarification purposes, when the town stopped doing our own solid waste services, there was essentially, I'm just going to use a big round number, there was basically a million dollars. That was essentially a fund balance after the RAD contract and the thought process was they were going to move forward and utilize our rate structure to maintain some balance as we move forward so that we had money to purchase equipment, apply overhead, administration, those types of things. That fund balance has steadily decreased, as you can see, over the, over the last few years to a point where we're going to be fully depleted in 23. Solid waste, much like water and wastewater, is an enterprise fund. So we're actually required by state law to utilize our rate structure to make sure that we break even on an annualized basis. We're not breaking even. We're, we're losing money on an annual basis and we're spending down that account balance that we had. So we're running into some serious issues over the next few years, but that's, that's why our enterprise fund stays whole from year to year is because we've been utilizing that fund balance. For those folks that have, have been on the Budget Committee, which many of you have over the last few years, you know that every year we budget to utilize some of that fund balance in order to keep this utility moving forward. We've reached a point where we can't do that anymore. So that's the basis for this.
Thank you, Brent. So that's basically, option one is basically you do nothing as part of your utility billing for solid waste. What I came up with, based on what I feel the expenses are going to be in the next five to 10 years, I put together some, some rates that, that I feel would cover the cost associated with the program as well as keeping a fund balance. And I'll talk about that at the end of what would probably have good fund balance appropriate for a utility program. And so these are the rates that I would propose moving forward to keep your, your fund whole as part of your solid waste program. And so with option two, what I did is, is you would pay cash for any capital expenditures moving forward, whether it's your, your transfer station or any of your equipment, that you would just pay cash. And based on that option, as you can see, your fund balance still goes down, but at least you can see it takes a while to about fiscal year 28 in order for that to take place. So it's, it's a better scenario based on those, the, as, based on these rate structures right here. And so that's option two, pay-go. And I did one more option as it relates to debt funding your capital equipment moving forward, which would be your transfer station and, and your, your equipment. And so based on that, you can see it still goes down, but as you can see, it, it levels out as part of that program. And so as part of that, I put all three of them together so you can get an idea of what all three scenarios look like. The yellow, as you can see, is the debt funding. The red or orange colored would be the, the pay-go. And then as you can see, the blue is your do-nothing. And then the green line is a recommendation of a fund balance that would be appropriate for a utility program as part of that process. So any questions with these scenarios or options?
One item I want you to elaborate on that you didn't touch base on focuses on the recycling, especially with understanding what's going on with other municipalities surrounding us. Because part of the decision, and I'm just speaking so I make sure everybody has the appropriate background, that we ended up moving to private rather than municipal funded is because it offered the recycling. We didn't have that opportunity at that time. Also, it was about half the cost. So majority of the council at that time went in this direction. What is your forecast regarding the recycling component of this?
That's, that is what's impacting the other cities right now. And for you as a town of Florence, it's not. Because of the current contract you have in place with RAD, that program is not going to be impacted and you will have some increases as part of your program, but your current contract only allows them to increase the, based on certain limitations and its cost of living, the cost of diesel fuels and some other things. So the way you have it set up, the way you set it up, it's, it's the perfect contract to have right now. Three years from now, it's, it could be a different story.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we're lucky, not only that we have a good contract and it limits how much RAD can raise our rates on an annualized basis, and actually we went the first four years without an increase. They have done a, a small increase the last two years. We expect another small increase this year. The other nice thing about us is we're so close to RAD's recycling center, they can still make money on our recycling, whereas some of these other communities, most notably Globe, Globe was going to have to raise its rates because RAD was going to lose money on the recycling just because of the deadhead miles associated with bringing their recycling to the recycling center. So we've been lucky from that standpoint in that our recycling isn't affected. We have a number of other things that, that do affect us, if you can go back to that slide, John, about the, the one that shows the pie chart. So if, if you look at this, we have operations, we have the RAD contract, we have disposal, which is like our public works concrete and stuff that we remove if we do a sidewalk project and, and we take that to the dump. The hot button issue two years ago was the transfer station. So you can see the transfer station there, which is something that most communities don't provide. We supplement that to the tune of $112,000 a year. So that, that also, it's something that council decided we wanted to continue knowing that we didn't have the revenues to cover it. So that's a big buy into that fund on an annualized basis is, is providing that transfer station. So John's coming forward tonight and saying, we have a number of costs, this is a utility, we should look at it just like we do water and sewer. If we're going to absorb these costs, we need to have a rate structure that supports the expenditures that we have. That said, Becky's going to provide some, some other options beyond the rate structure, but John's presentation provides three options on rate structure.
Can you also provide an overview for everybody of where we are in regards to our own transfer station? Because part of the reason council had that decision of wanting to absorb those costs was when we operated that fund, we had all of that included for our residents. So when we decided that we were going to privatize and then the one contract went away, we needed to go and supplement and find appropriate services, understanding that our vision was to be able to sustain our own.
So good point. At that point, when council challenged us with finding another arrangement with respect to a transfer station, we went to bid. We received a number of bids. We actually got a very good bid from Waste Management, which operates the only waste facility in our, in our town, to get some business there in terms of the transfer station. And our costs actually went down from what we used to provide further to the north. The challenge is that dump is now closed and so our costs just increased substantially to utilize that transfer station. So one of the, one of the decisions that once again we need to make is, are we going to continue providing those services going forward? And if so, they need to be reflected in the rate structure.
Okay. Are there questions by council? Michelle, I saw you feverishly writing.
Oh, my, sorry.
Okay. Anybody, Vice Mayor?
Well, we talked about doing a transfer station joint agreement with the county. Did we ever explore that and what's, what's the status of that?
So we did explore it fully with the county. As a matter of fact, the county did a feasibility study with respect to that and it was found to not be financially viable in terms of the costs associated with that for the benefit that we would receive. We have continued those discussions and our most recent discussion with the county is the idea, and Florence has been pushing this for the past almost a year, right Ben, is to have all of us in this part of the county jointly bid our solid waste services to, number one, hopefully get in a competitive advantage in terms of price. Number two, our plan would be to include in that regional bid, three transfer stations from whoever wins that bid. One in Santan Valley, one in Florence and one in Eloy at, at Eloy's Dump. Unfortunately, when you do something regional and cooperative, it takes a long time for that to take place. So we've drafted the documents, we've provided them to the county. We meet on about a bi-monthly basis. There's interest. Eloy, Coolidge, Florence, Pinale County have all shown interest. Casa Grande's shown some cursory interest. Queen Creek's shown some interest. However, Queen Creek just went through their own bid process for solid waste. They haven't awarded it yet, as I understand, but they've gone through that process. But it's one of those things, if, if we hope to go through that, and that's why we have the $500,000 set aside, is if that does take place and we do get that transfer station here, we're going to need some funds to make improvements to, to make that work, but the wheels of that process go slowly.
Thank you.
The other thing I would point out, I think is important, is our initial contract, our initial bid with RAD was a five-year contract with four extensions? Is that right or three? Five extensions. We are on our second extension, we're going to go to our third extension here soon. So we're, we're, we only have two years left on our existing RAD contract before we have to go back out to the street. We were hoping to do this regional bid in the next two years instead of going on our own because we think we'll get better prices.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wall.
I may not be remembering this correctly, but what is the echo station, eco station for 300,000?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Wall, that is nifty Ben language. So the echo station is the property purchased that council made last year for the water barn and the location for the dumpsters and recycling bins to take them out of Heritage Park. Ben thought it was a lot more sexy to call it an eco station. So we've ended up with eco station. So that is that area that's going to be next to the water barn where all those dumpsters and recycling bins will be placed.
Okay. So are we recovering the cost for that by increasing our solid waste rates?
Well, we could. Or we pay for it by cash, as John said, or we actually finance that, that infrastructure so that we don't have to increase the rates as fully and that we can extend the life of that fund. Does that make sense?
Yes. I have another question.
Mm-hmm.
On page- Um, on page eight, the, the pie chart page, the capital amount of 150,000, what is that?
That is part of the eco station and I believe a vehicle, right?
No, it's part of the.
Oh, it's just the eco station? Okay. So it's the first half of the eco station.
Yeah. You're paying for a part of it already this year? This, this is what's going to be left to pay because you're going to do it over two fiscal years.
Okay. So the operation amount is 65,000. That's for the overhead to administer the solid waste program through our finance department?
Well, it's just basically for anything else other than your contracted service for RAD, uh, your transfers and your capital. So, uh, you have a lot of different things that go into the expenditure of a fund. And luckily, uh, we pared those down where they're not too, too much. They're, uh, consistent with the fund balance.
Okay.
That part of it is, um, operations, personnel, of course, and any items, maintenance, modesty, things like that, anything that you need to function within that fund. Our, uh, public works director has been very, um, uh, conservative in budgeting for this.
Okay. So last, hopefully, um, the proposed rate structure, is that in relation to scenario one?
It's for scenario two and three.
Okay. So.
Scenario one is you're not, you don't do anything.
So that's just status quo?
Correct.
Okay. So those rates would support either scenario two or scenario three?
Correct.
Based on the graph going down?
Correct.
Or not quite so fast?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Hughes.
What will be the minimum, uh, funding balance on two or three? Will it be the same?
The minimum fund balance, it depends on the year because your costs are going to go up. So I, I based it off of two months of operational cost. So it's anywhere from about 80,000 to, to, it could be go up by the 10th year, it could be up to 250,000. It just depends on what year. So this first year, it's between 80 and 90,000.
And what would you, we do in the budget with, uh, with reserves, any type of reserve that we have that we're not supposed to be spending or not utilizing, including debt service? We take our cash balance when we're budgeting and we subtract those items out so we know that our fund is solid and you still have your reserve. And what's left over is what you have to budget with for that year.
With the balance right now, when, when we're going to vote for this, what is the balance that we have in the fund?
Well, if you.
It's probably in here somewhere.
Yes, it's about a million dollars.
Now.
And, um, that, that does not include the exclusion, so you have to subtract those out.
Right.
Uh, why is the revenue lower for 2021 versus 1920? Why is the revenue going down? On page two of your presentation?
Of mine?
Yes.
I have projected revenue of, for fiscal year 20 of 992,289 dollars and 21,152,007.
Well, on that same page down to the bottom, what's the unfunded revenue? I guess I don't understand.
That's, that's expenses. That's expenses.
I'm sorry, John, what was that again?
You show, uh, unfunded revenue, 1.292,289 for 1920. And for the next year, it drops down to a million and 40,000.
Right. I'm going to have to back up here.
That's, that's what I would think.
Yes. Yes, I was backing out trying to show your reserves in there for the capital items.
So you're backing out what, 300,000?
Yes. Cause that's, uh, the 300,000 was what was reserved for the eco station. And now it's going to be over two fiscal years.
So that's the B station that we're paying for. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I guess I don't, I don't like any of these options because I don't like the fact that it continues to increase with all three of our options. I feel like it should be self-sustaining. It shouldn't, we shouldn't be draining the account. I guess when that item was brought to us about the eco station, we don't always ask where that money is coming from. I guess I assume it's in the CIP or it's something that's already funded. So the fact that we're now, now being presented with, oh, well, now we don't know where we're going to come for that? I guess that's the way I'm understanding it and that's frustrating me.
Uh, councilmember Larson, I need to explain to you, those monies were already included in the total cash when we started out. What has happened over a period of time is your expenditures are exceeding the revenues, the ones that were not considered in that rate. If you go through and you read my analysis, you can see what happened in the initial rate. Any other expenditures other than the, um, the fees for the, uh, professional services and the ones going for the administrative fees and for the, um, $500,000 for the transfer station were not considered at all in the rate. And those are eating into your fund balance, so they were not considered.
That's what I asked, that's what I was talking about. I would like to see my funds be sustainable, um, for something like this and not where they're dropping off each year. That's my point is they don't want to ever hit a zero.
You never want to get in that position.
So to me, when I'm looking at all three of these scenarios and they continue to drop, I'm seeing that they eventually hit a zero, so.
Yes.
I think I've got a good explanation to the councilwoman, mayor. We have budgeted for the eco station. The fund balance was left there specifically for capital expenditures like that. The challenge is our expenses exceed our revenues annually. So, um, we need to adjust, uh, our revenues to make sure that they can account for our expenditures. And it's, it's a delicate balance in that the challenge that we gave John was a lot of things are going to change, including growth rate. And what we had him project is a 5% uh, on an annualized basis. The thought was, let's come up with an increase that's nominal in nature so we don't hit our residents too hard, that buys us some additional time so that we see what occurs, uh, in the future, including a potential new bid for solid waste services, uh, perhaps some changes in the economy, additional growth, uh, to, to try and extend the amount of time that that fund balance is there, uh, in, in, into the next few years. And much like we do on the water and wastewater side, we should be looking at this about every three years instead of waiting 10 years, uh, to, to do this. So the thought was, if we can utilize that fund balance, if, if we continue to move forward and, and buy ourselves three years and then look at it again, the curve may do this, which if you recall the presentations on water and wastewater, that's exactly what a rate schedule does, is it kind of has humps based on when you do your capital expenditures and how you finance things. Since this is the first time we've done this, uh, in a long time, there's no ability to have humps. There's just coming to you and saying, we've got to increase our rates, uh, to, to make best use of these funds without hitting the, the rate payers too hard. If that makes sense.
Okay. So, um, I thought I was understanding this. I was going right along until councilwoman Larson asked her question. And now I'm going, what the heck is the green line? Because I was thinking that the green line was the one that we're hoping to achieve, but now I'm realizing that that, what, how do we get that green line? How do we get the minimum fund balance? Because that one did not drop below zero.
Correct. The minimum fund balance is what I would recommend that you keep within your, your cash account moving forward every single, there might be an emergency and you do have that cash funding in your fund to keep moving forward without collecting any additional revenue.
So if scenario one, we know scenario one is doing nothing, that's going to take us way to a lot of debt. Scenario two and three though, both bring us below zero. So how do we maintain a minimum fund balance if with a rate increase, we're still going to drop below zero by 20, uh, projected year 2023-ish, somewhere around there? So I'm just trying to figure out, if we increase their rate, but in, by 2023, we're still going to end up somewhere pretty close to a zero balance, how do we justify to our residents that, oh, we're increasing your rate, but we're going to still keep?
Let me clarify this chart right here. Let's, um, so let me, let me remove, let me go back to the debt. Let's go back to the cash funding one, okay? Just, so as you can see, and listen, we always do a 10-year projection, but you're really looking at the first five years is what you really need to look at. So I would recommend you looking up to about 2024 as your point, okay? And if you look up at 2024, you're still above zero, as you can see, and you're still going to be above that minimum fund balance. And this one right here, you can see you're going to be above, you won't get below the minimum fund balance until fiscal year 27. By that time, you still have plenty of time to react. And I think what, what I would recommend is you don't approve all these rates this time. You just approve the one rate is what we're really looking for. Next year, you look to see, did that rate achieve what these charts showed? If, if it showed that your fund balance is going to be higher than, than the chart showed that I showed you now, then you could say, we don't need to increase it a dollar, it might only be 80 cents. Then you look at next year and you keep looking at it every year to see how, what your fund balance looks like at that time.
My goal to John was to make sure that we make adjustments in the next few years to maybe get us out five years and then relook at it again in the next three to five years to see if we need to make another adjustment.
I like the five-year idea. Personally, I don't like doing it every year because every year that means I have to pay another consultant to come out to reanalyze. Same data that we just analyzed last year. So to me, that doesn't make sense, no offense.
I agree.
But to be fair, I don't like that idea at all. I'd rather do five years and I'd rather have a consistent rate and I don't want to get anywhere close to zero, even if we do rebound. I don't want to get in, so that's why I'm not really a big fan of these options because at some point they hit a zero, so.
Madam Mayor, I think that Becky has some additional things that she wants to talk about that are in her staff report, uh, that will probably help with this discussion.
I do want to assure you that we're always monitoring these funds and especially if you have an issue like this. We try to, uh, make sure that we go within the budget and we're budgeting what was, you're supposed to look at your rate study. You see what was established as expenditures for the budget that the rate, uh, study, that the rate consultant has given you. You look at your capital projects, you see if they're still in line. You'll have to do these things every year as you're going along during the budget session. And if there's any unusual expenditures, you have to compensate for them somewhere along the line. If that means increasing rates, we may have, come back with a recommendation to do more. But we try to, uh, very, uh, it's very difficult, um, to say in five years that this is going to be the same because it may not, things change in that period of time. So it requires a lot of diligence on the part of the finance and on the department directors themselves, whenever they're, uh, they're reviewing their budgets, they're proposing their budgets, and they're also having to go into the rate studies themselves to make sure that they're still on board with what's provided as a, um, projection. But I do want to go ahead and, uh, we've come up with several different options that, um, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
I was just going to make a comment when we get to the very end.
Okay. We, we had several options prepared because of course in this, there are several things that we can do. We've already started minimizing things and, and moving around for next year. But we can continue the sanitation fund as it is, as is now, continuing to deplete the fund balance with no rate increases requested. The town would see slight price increases every year. Eventually, this would mean that the general fund would have to kick in money to just, to support the fund. That's the only place you can get money from to support an enterprise. Continue operating the sanitation fund with increased, uh, rates laid out in the sanitation study, restoring a positive fund balance and supporting expenses. These rates are smooth to ensure that the customers are not seeing massive price increases or decreases in any given year. We could eliminate future capital outlay, which means that your fund will not grow. You won't be able to do the projects that are set forth and we don't have many, we only had three projects. No consideration for a transfer station, and this is a majority of the fund balance that's being observed right now. This would provide fund balance back into the operating funds, but the rate increases will still have to be implemented because it would just extend the life just a little, uh, couple of years more before it would be depleted. Eliminate the transfer station services at Waste Management at the Ironwood landfill, saving the customer approximately 93 cents a month. Contracting out billing and administrative functions of the sanitation operation for future consideration. This would save the fund approximately $66,000 in expenditure between direct charges of town staff and administrative staff and the cost of billing, but we would be billed for the cost of this service. And at this time, we don't know what that cost is unless, have you had a chance?
We have a, just to clarify for, for council so that you understand what that means, the 68,000 we saw on the previous slide, we said that was supplies, that was staffing, you know, that's Curtis part-time, that's front counter services part-time. We have some, an employee of the finance department that, that does the sanitation work and amounts to about $68,000 a year. The thought process is stop doing those customer service functions here in the town and allow whoever the provider is to do that. Ben was just writing down some information. He's been calling around with, with respect to that and, and he has some numbers of, of how that might fare it out.
Good. And council, I think, uh, as we went into our RFP process, you remember last year, we sent out the RFP for solid waste services on the RAD contract. Ultimately, we decided not to accept any of those proposals and we just continued with our current contract and did another extension. Um, as we've had continued discussions, uh, there is some appetite in the market. Should we, um, I guess not be able to go for a regional solution? There is certainly some appetite in the market from those private haulers to have this discussion again, to send that RFP out again. Uh, the discussions that I've heard in terms of costs for both customer service and billing are that they're negligible for those, um, large corporations. Um, the billing is really, you know, a dime or two per customer per month because they are able to use the economy of scale. They're able to use bulk rate mailings and those type of things that, that we simply can't do on, on a local municipal level. And so there are certainly some economies of scale that, that some of these larger, larger private haulers can take advantage of that we as a, as a municipality can't. Obviously, um, there are impacts to our organization, there are impacts to, to the fund, both, both positive and negative of going that approach, but it certainly is something that private haulers are able to do to handle both the customer service and the billing aspects.
There would be other potential savings, uh, in the inner town charge for billing services approximately $6,800 a year, but this may or may not impact, um, customer service. You could take back the sanitation fund, but you're talking about a major impact as far as finance goes because you'd have to purchase all of the containers back, the personnel would have to be, uh, put back into the fund as an expenditure, probably, I think we had, if I'm not mistaken, four people that I recall in the sanitation fund working, plus the cost of the vehicles themselves at about $250,000 a truck. So you're talking about significant impact, uh, of capital outlay to take back the sanitation fund, but not only that, the rate would considerably increase. You would be looking at probably a rate close to $30 a month.
That's what our rate was before we ended up going.
27.
Correct. Correct. Um, and understandably, I'm unsure something negative would happen with recycling. Now, obviously, you know, at that time, I voted that we kept it. Um, I was one of those people that said, hey, you know why? Reflecting, we've done a good thing in regards to being able to recycle, cutting the bills in half. Um, when we talked about the, I want to say it was one-point-six million dollars is what we started with in the sanitation fund. And we were going to move forward with our own transfer station and that's still in the plan, it's only, you know, a little over two years out. I don't like paying it, that we're dipping into it and that fund is going down. However, I definitely don't want to see a, a reverse swing where either we cut services, customer service is negatively impacted. Um, I want to make sure we're making a smart decision.
And the very last option is to go ahead and just outsource the sanitation service entirely, contract with an entity that will do everything. That means it takes the town out of the sanitation business. All we would get would be our franchise amounts that come into the general fund for sanitation services. That means we would no longer have a relationship with our sanitation itself. So those are your options. I, we've laid, we tried to think of everything that we possibly could to give to you so that you could make a, a decision on which direction you would like us to go in. But what we are asking tonight is that you accept the sanitation rate study and adopt it by motion. And then if you choose to go ahead to, uh, give us the, uh, notice of intention to increase sanitation rates and fees as provided in the rate study and set a public hearing for March sixteenth, twenty-twenty. Uh, if you decide to go ahead and accept our rate study and you want to go ahead and go forward with the fee.
I want to know where we are in regards to our transfer station, just for public knowledge.
There are no plans at this time for a transfer station. It would rely on that regional agreement to have that take place. So our buy-in, we've projected at, at five-hundred-thousand dollars. Obviously, to build a transfer station would be five, six times that amount. So ours was just to, to work with somebody else cooperatively to, to get a, a transfer station. The one thing I would point out is if in fact the transfer station does come to fruition, that's not just a cost to us, that would also be a, we'd potentially get revenue from that as well, but it's, it's, it's not close, Mayor. It's, it's going to be some time out because that would be a cooperative effort.
Okay.
I guess I, even your last statement, am I understanding, okay, well, hold on, stack up. So your comments about how we do all the servicing and about how there's other contracts out there that they do the servicing, I guess, when I moved here, I was always very confused why we did that. I assumed it was some type of savings. So we're saying that we're not saving money by servicing, but it's actually cheaper for them to do it, then why aren't we doing that? Like, why isn't that, is that something that was not added in our contract? Is that something that we could add to our contract? Is that something we could do by ourselves as a one-off, I guess, just to save the money right there?
Yeah, Mayor Walter, Councilmember Larson, a few different reasons. First of all, the idea is that there's an enhanced, uh, customer service level because we are local, we are here on the ground. Um, if those customer service resources are outsourced to a Phoenix-based office or a, you know, Tulsa, Oklahoma-based office, wherever a larger company may have, they may not understand the streets or the sensitivities that some of our local employees do, may not be able to look outside and see it's raining and understand, hey, that truck's not going to be able to drive on a dirt road today. And so they can quickly give those answers. And so some of those, those reasons are why you want some local, um, I guess, customer service. But again, certainly if we, uh, were to go to, uh, you know, whether it's RAD or otherwise, you know, it's not in our current contract for RAD to provide the billing services, it's not in our current contract for RAD to provide the customer service. Uh, that would really require a contract amendment. And at that point, you're changing the scope of our current contract so much.
Yeah.
It'd probably be better to go out and bid and, and get a, uh, true, true view of the market.
And if I remember correctly in regards to that contract, the reason why not only was it the customer service and that aspect of it, but there was at that time presented to council a cost savings component, because if we allowed an outside company, this was what was presented, if we allowed an outside company to take over the billing, then that would increase the rates of our citizens and we could provide it at a lower cost than would be had we outsourced it.
These things are, are so complicated because that contract was approved eight years ago. Um, things were different, it was a different situation, we were getting out of the trash business. I wasn't here at the time, but I'm sure there was a conversation about, okay, if we get out of the trash business, how many employees is this going to affect and how many people would be laid off, uh, as, as part of that occurring? And the solution essentially the town came up with, as the mayor said, essentially cut the solid waste rate in half, uh, but also allowed the customer service component and the ability to utilize those funds to keep those existing town employees, uh, employed at the town. I wasn't here at the time, but I'm sure that that was part of that discussion. Uh, and then the market has changed a lot. There's more people in this market now. Uh, the economies of scale, the competition have changed. So some of the information that Ben just shared with you would have been very different eight years ago than they are now. Uh, so it's, it's hard to gauge where we are now versus the approvals that occurred eight years ago. The good news here is we have a good contract. It has good terms. John, who's an expert in the field, uh, has told us multiple times, you guys have a great contract. You have a, you have a great setup. Unfortunately, that contract is going away. In the next two years, we only have two more extensions, uh, and it's, it's time to make some of these tough decisions. The intent of the council at that time was to utilize that fund balance to enhance, build infrastructure and, uh, new vehicles for, you know, the, say Curtis and what have you, that was the intent. The intent of that fund at that time was not to fund a transfer station every year, uh, and dip into that fund. So things have changed, uh, over time and so we're adapting and adjusting to the, to the changes in time.
And, and Councilmember, what I would add as well is that our current rate doesn't include just payment for RAD, but that extra four dollars or whatever that goes on top of the thirteen-something that RAD charges us covers the cost for that waste management landfill, as well as the, the costs that are outside of the, the rental dump truck program where a customer can call up and say, hey, I want to get a, a dump truck and they can fill it up and it only costs ninety-five dollars for them. But then sometimes for us to dump, it may cost three-hundred dollars depending on how much is in there. And so some of those extra costs that are outside of the scope of the RAD contract, those extra services that we provide, those costs are covered through that extra fee that we charge to the customer.
Yeah, okay, thank you for answering that. Um, I guess the other thing, going back to the renewing the contract and reviewing it, of course you should review that in your budget session every time, I agree. But having a consultant come back every year seems ridiculous to me, especially as a rate payer. If I'm looking at these rates, you're talking about two dollars, two dollars and fifty cents on proposed fees over the next four or five years. So we're going to pay, you know, thousands of dollars for a consultant to come to raise the rate a dollar, two dollar. As a consumer, I'd pay the two dollars just to know that that money is going to that fund so that if an agreement comes about where we can join in and build that transfer station, then my town can step up and do it. So as a rate payer, I'd rather just pay that extra couple bucks a month. So for me, that doesn't, I'd rather just go that route personally. Um, I know that this issue caused a lot of, um, people to get upset last time when we didn't have coverage. So to me, I, again, would rather have something that maintains having this balance sitting there and having it be available to us. And again, knowing that there's not going to be an interruption of service or knowing that we can continue to offer the same services year after year that they've accustomed, become accustomed to. That's my opinion.
Councilmember Hughes.
I think with the growth of Pinell County, that the future in two years is going to look a lot more brighter, that we're going to have a lot more interest for being able to bid out. So my suggestion would be to get through these next two years and then we look at something to go out for bid and to possibly, at that point, it'd be a lot better well-served, our public well-served as going privatized.
Vice Mayor.
I have a question. Uh, I read in your report that, uh, there's like twelve thousand dollars that was spent out in Anthem for, uh, winter visitors not restarting their service. I would suggest when a, when a winter visitor stops their service, they have to turn in their trash cans.
It's very difficult. We've tried that before, they lock them up in their garage and there's no way that we can go in and get them.
Well, we keep billing them if they don't, if they don't turn them in.
I suggested that, that if they don't turn them in, just continue to bill them, but they'll, they'll call in and raise a ruckus. We, you, uh, if you would ever have to sit in, uh, poor little Lindsay's spot, she gets yelled at constantly every day. We do our best to do, uh, to try to minimize the leakage. I don't expect that it's going to be going on at this magnitude, um, forever because we have been working with waste management to try to get this rectified and, and I would say that I would do things a little bit differently by giving a credit to ourselves if, if we did not have the corresponding customers. They're just going through and running through the streets and picking up cans along the street without actually checking to make sure that the customer has already signed back into the town. It's very difficult to do because they have to call in, it delays their, their processing of their sanitation service, but we are working with them right now to try to minimize that.
I thought that was done electronically.
I, I remembered that in the presentation as well.
They do check them. I know somebody personally who got checked because they didn't realize that they had stopped their service and then restarted. So I know they check it and maybe, maybe there may still be a leakage because of that in some way.
There is.
But they are doing it. I don't think it's that they don't do it.
Well, this sounds like another opportunity for incorporating that additional smart cities technology because originally when this was presented to council, the guys that were driving the truck were supposed to know, okay, who's a customer, who's not a customer? You didn't pay, you're not a customer, we're not picking up, we just keep going. Um, maybe they need to have some sort of a...
Yeah, and, and Mayor, I think this is a good point to also mention, we've worked with RAD and they're expanding their technology on their, on their trucks. They've added cameras on all of them. They are now adding tablets to all of them where as they're driving, the GPS location will pop up, this service is active, this one is not. And then secondarily to that, we're also working with Johnson Utilities through Epcor to give us a list of any time they get the turn-ons or the shut-offs, any time the water is being turned on in their location or it's being shut off, we can get those notifications. So we're working with them to try and figure out that system so that we can then have that audit check on the backend as well. And so I think the combination of those, we'll start to see the amount of, of, of those drop, but they do take time and, and we're working on that.
And as Mr. Trujillo told us, this is not anything new within the other community. They have the same thing, but a lot of them are a lot, lot greater magnitude than we are. And, and I do think that we will get it resolved to where it's not, it's at a minimum.
So it was actually a very entertaining discussion when we had this with RAD, um, where they told us about the new technologies and that the driver, when he goes, or she, gets in their truck on a daily basis, they give them a printout and it's, so it's like an Excel spreadsheet and it tells them which cans they're supposed to pick up and which ones they're not going to pick up. So they go and they throw that in on the dashboard of their truck and needless to say, we think that a number of them don't ever pull out the spreadsheet and look address by address, they just drive up and if there's a green can, they, they dump the green can and if there's a blue can, they dump the blue can. So I, I think that you're right, uh, technology's going to help us with that leakage.
Councilmember Cortez.
Uh, sorry, two things. Um, on John's point, when you have cable and you get that nice little box that you pay a monthly fee for, when you cancel your cable, you have so many days to return that or it becomes your property, but they charge you for it. So I don't understand why we can't just do that for the cans. If your cans are locked up in your garage, well, now they're your personal property so you can do whatever you want with them, but we won't pick them up till you sign back up for service, but charge them a fee for those cans. And then that way, it, it eliminates the problem of us if they call and say, well, I don't have service, yes ma'am, but you didn't return your leased equipment, so now you have to pay for that equipment and it is now your property, you're free to keep it in your garage for the next twenty years if you want. Um, and then my other question, or my other comment was, when you talked about the roll-offs, they pay ninety-five dollars, but it might cost us actually three-hundred? No, they need to pay the three-hundred. If you're going to, if you're ordering a roll-off, I mean, I've done flips and I know how much stuff I will cram in that roll-off and if, if it costs, but I've never done it through the town. I've personally called the company and had it delivered, so I, to hear that it only costs ninety-five dollars, dang, I'm going to get me some roll-offs and I'm going to charge people to put, it's, that's like crazy to me that we're only charging ninety-five dollars, but the actual cost is significantly more than that. I get trying to save people money, but at the same time, we're now looking at a rate increase for all residents. I never use a roll-off, most of my neighbors don't use a roll-off, but we're going to have to help compensate for the guy who took advantage of using a roll-off at ninety-five dollars, but it might have cost three-hundred or more depending on what's in it. So I'm kind of like, and as far as the drivers, they're so lovely. They, they love to put little notes on your trash cans if you have something in your recycle bin that shouldn't be there and if you do it again, they won't allow you to do recycling. I know this from experience.
Councilmember Cortez, I just want to make you aware that those cans do belong to RAD. Uh, the town does not own them because we got rid of ours when we did away with our, our portion of it. But that doesn't mean that we can, uh, put it on our fee schedule if that's the case and, uh, be able to charge for it at that point. Um, I think it would be difficult and it's hard to catch them sometimes because some, some people are renters also. And I don't think we have any, uh, uh, teeth to actually charge the property owner back for it at all. It would have to be whoever is renting at that point in time and usually they're come and gone. So there are a lot of challenges in doing things like that, but we, we try diligently and I've told the girls, if you find someone, you know, that wasn't on your, um, billing list, you need to give someone a call out there or send them a letter or actually go to the residents, have someone go to the residents, knock on the door to find out what's going on. But, you know, that's a lot of work on our part. It, it, you know, it takes a lot to go out there and I don't know if that's the safest thing to do or not, to send one of our employees out there. But we, we try to do the best that we can.
It might be a way that you're going to also catch people who are squatting on a property. If all of a sudden there's a trash can being put out and those residents aren't there, especially in the areas where there are a lot of people who leave. You, I mean, there are some streets that are almost empty. There might be one or two residents left during the summertime and they're not noticing someone, so that empty trash can, that trash can may indicate that somebody is in a property that they're not supposed to be in. So it would be something that RAD and us should be paying attention to.
Yes, I agree.
Councilmember Wall.
Are we done? Have you had enough trash talk this evening, Councilmember? Well, I just wanted to make a couple of comments for what they're worth. Um, first of all, it's obvious there are a lot of moving parts to this sanitation account and the options that might be available in the future, whether near or far future. Um, we're not being asked to approve any of those options at this point in time, obviously. And in reality, we're just being asked to, uh, accept a rate study that may or may not be valid next year or the year after.
Correct.
And we're asked, being asked to allow the publication of, uh, increase in this coming year's sanitation rates. Um, so I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that, we're not proposing to increase for the next five or ten or however many years. Uh, but I do have a question about the notice of intention. Um, how is it that ADOC has been paying such a, a much lower rate and that we're now proposing to bring them up to the same proposed increased rate?
Well, that rate, if you know, um, across from the high school where the ADOC, uh, has their housing, they have some dumpsters out there and a rate was established at that amount at that time.
Okay. So it's just... So it's just for those dumpsters?
Yes, just for those dumpsters.
And is that per dumpster, 1808 being proposed?
Per resident. Per resident, whoever's in that, is that right?
So the residents there have access to the dumpsters?
Yes.
Okay, and they pay individually for that access?
Yes, and the reason why, it's because it's like community dumpsters, so for some reason, they set a rate at that amount.
And does that include recyclables?
I don't...
So we're gonna charge them the same rate as those who have recycling?
Councilmember Wall, they have access to our recycling location at Heritage Park that they've used on many occasions, but only on, on site, they only have the trash service.
Okay, but we all have access to those dumpsters at Heritage Park, right?
Correct, yes.
My only other comment is that I hate seeing odd numbers on rates, like 8 cents and 33 cents. Could we just either round up or round down so that it's not such an odd number?
We would be happy to round up.
I mean, $8 or $18.10 or...
Sure. We'll be happy to do that. And I just want to make a comment, this whole rate analysis involved all of us, the town manager, Ben, Lisa, Carl, that works in the finance department with me, Public Works, Chris, we had several people working on this, very diligently.
All right, well, thank you for your presentation tonight. Again, this is only to accept the sanitation rate study adopted by motion, a notice of intention to increase sanitation rates and fees as provided in the sanitation rate study, and to set a public hearing for March 16, 2020. So with that, I need a motion.
I motion that we accept, accept the sanitation rate study and adopt by motion a notice of intent to increase sanitation rates and fees as provided in the sanitation rate study and set a public hearing for March 16, 2020.
Second.
Motion on a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have our managers' report.
Madam Mayor, I have nothing.
Excellent. Next up, we have our department reports. Any questions for any of our department heads? Next up, we have our call to the public. Call to the public, does anybody have anything to say at this time? Closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only, councilmember Wall.
You're moving fast.
Talked enough trash tonight. Don't worry, I don't have a question.
Okay, well, I'll try to keep it brief. First of all, I, I was unable to attend the January 13 joint meeting between HDAC and the council, and I apologize for that absence. I wish I had been there, because today I spent a couple of hours watching the video of that meeting, and I have to say how impressed I was with the entire meeting. Kimber Lanning's presentation was outstanding. It gave so many points for consideration that we all need to, to consider. I hope that we will continue to interact with her and to avail ourselves of the services that she has available. There's a lot more to come, hopefully, on that topic. Next, I want to acknowledge, and maybe Brian can expand on this a little bit, the grant that was recently received from the Diamondbacks Foundation for improvements to the Little League Park, which I think was absolutely a huge win for...
Mayor, councilmember Wall, we, we actually, it's more like a second place award, but we'll take it. We didn't win the, we didn't get their primary grant for a complete field renovation with lights and all that other stuff, but we did get, they were, they're very impressed. They unbeknownst to us did a site visit, they saw the park, they were impressed, they thought it had a lot of potential for some renovations. So the grant is actually not from the Diamondbacks directly, it's from the Kendrick family, which is the owners of the Diamondbacks. So they are excited about it, they're gonna come down here and make a formal announcement at a later date, and once those renovations are completed this fall, they will do a dedication, and we will get a scoreboard and all the other fun stuff that the other fields do get. So it's pretty exciting. They're gonna do the work for us, it doesn't go through our, our budget process or anything, they're just gonna come out and take care of things, so we're pretty excited.
Thank you, that, that's really exciting. And last but not least, if you're driving through town on Main Street, coming from the south, please notice on the backside of the museum, there is a new mural being created that is kind of exciting. I had a chance to put a little bit of paint on it myself yesterday morning, but it's, it's really going to enhance the appearance of the museum building on that side. It's the, the parking lot on the opposite side of the entrance to the museum, and it's a joint venture with a muralist who has been putting murals up throughout Pinell County, throughout our area, and he's gonna be writing a book that describes the mural, the components of what's in the mural, and it hopefully will become a guidebook for people to go around various towns, view the murals, and also spend time in, in those towns. So be sure and take a look at it. It should be finished by Wednesday, as I understand it, but it's, it's really going to be beautiful based on the sketch that I saw. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes.
Well, I agree with, with Councilwoman Wall about Kimber Lanning. I think she's an asset, I think she'll be great if we can start working with her in our downtown. I too also miss that. Unfortunately, I was on a cruise, I was trying not to puke. Sorry. I also want to thank the, I wanna congratulate the Florence High School cheerleaders for their third state championship, and now they're heading for nationals, and so, go.
Do you know how you can support them?
Yes.
Can I tell everybody?
It'll be, it's at the Cantina, they're gonna have a fundraiser for them, that's this Friday, right? No, tomorrow.
Wait.
Is it tomorrow or Friday?
I thought it was the...
It's the 4th, you're right.
Yeah.
It's the 4th.
Tomorrow night, they're going to be serving, and a proceed, part of the proceeds go to them.
So everybody come out.
Councilmember Cortez.
Um, I did attend the HDAC meeting, work session, and it, it was good. I feel like we got some positive stuff out of it, and it gave us a good idea of where everybody's at, and I know that we're gonna move forward and we're gonna do great things based off of that. And if you ever wanna look at a town and you're saying, oh, why are they doing this, and why are they doing that? I can guarantee you that Kimber Lanning's name is attached to it 100%. So as we sit a little envious of some of our neighbors, we need to look at who they're working with, who they're talking to, and we need to start following in those footsteps if we wanna be the town of envy. I also attended the Florence Give Back. I, for whatever reason, I have a hard time remembering what that was called.
Make a Difference Day.
Yes, Make a Difference Day. And we went to the rodeo grounds, and we, us women that were there were moving railroad ties, and the kids worked their butts off, and it was so much fun. Oh my gosh, I had a great time, that was my first time attending, and then we moved from there, because we got done a lot faster than they thought we would. We filled one of those roll-offs in an hour with the volunteers that were there, and then we moved over to one of our residents' homes and helped pull weeds and clean up their front yard, and it looked fantastic when we left, and then we were able to go to the park and take advantage of lunch that was served to us. In my little break that I had, I stopped by the powwow, and I just wanted to say, one of the comments that was suggested was that the powwow not be referred to as a farmer's market, because it is not a farmer's market. There must, my only thing I can think of is people are showing up thinking that they're gonna get a pick and choose, and so to help with that confusion is to just not make, make sure that we don't ever refer to it as a farmer's market, that it's more clear to people what it is. And then I did attend the awards banquet that the Chamber put on, I was on one of, I was on that committee, and we sold out. We, we didn't intend to sell out, we didn't think we would, but we did, we had to tell people, sorry, we can't sell you a ticket, because we, we were at capacity. It's not that we don't want to, we were at capacity, we couldn't take any more guests in, in the building. It was great, it was such a great event, it uplifted everybody, and everyone I've talked to was so excited, and they're, they're more excited about next year, and just, I think it was a great thing that the Chamber did, and the awards that were handed out were well-deserved, and everybody was very respectful and just loved to see us kinda rally behind our businesses and thank them for what they're doing. So I just like the positive things that have been happening, and I'm looking forward to some more.
That's it. Councilmember Larson.
Um, since, I guess we're starting out with the HDAC recap, I guess, I totally agree with what Kimber said about how a city can grow and what they can do. I just encourage, as if she comes back again, I encourage her to spend more time with our staff, reviewing policy, reviewing all the changes that we have made. So that way, then we can get an accurate description of things that we can change, so we can actually focus in on those things, that's what I would like to see if we decide to use her in the future. Some things I wanted to point out, Make a Difference Day is fantastic, I'm so happy that that's continuing on, and that we are, continue to be involved in our community in a hands-on way like that. Some things coming up in the future, the Historic Home Tour is coming up on February 8, which I know I'm really looking forward to that. I know I always enjoy riding on the trolley and checking out the beautiful homes, so. Also, the Memories on Main Car Show that we talked about a little bit earlier is coming up as well on February 15 at 9:00 AM, which is very exciting. And I, I think that I personally feel a little bit of a victory here, I don't know if anybody's noticed, I've been over to the community center, but there is art up on the walls. And if you know me, that, that art is really something I'm passionate about, because I think it, I believe it, like Kimber said, it really impacts all of your community, and it can help bring people together, as well as help with economic development, all aspects of your community. So I am very gracious to Brian, as well as our community members that helped get that up and running, so thank you so much, Brian, for getting those up. And I think that's all I have for tonight.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I guess I agree with everything that's been said tonight, and I want to thank my fellow council members for all the great work that they're doing. And I just want to, to tell, I don't know, Ben, if you're aware, that the Pinell, Pinell County Joint Land Use is meeting tomorrow. I don't know, somebody from town attended, was that you, Jennifer?
Yeah, we will be there.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, everything's been covered this evening. The events that were discussed, I enjoyed also participating in them, as well as am looking forward to, I keep jumping right to the car show, but our Historic Home Tour is first this coming weekend. Hope to see everybody out there. With that, we are adjourned for the evening. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion on a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. That motion carries, y'all have a great night.